Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Board of Selectmen August 18th Remote Participation Only Meeting. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing of any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, Conference ID 134208476, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access and will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. All right, so please note that if, please mute your microphones and disable your videos until which time you would be speaking or presenting. I'm going to take a roll call to open the meeting and then we'll go through the agenda. Selectman Castro.
Present.
Selectman Kokolas.
Present.
Selectman Dinkins.
Present.
Selectman Meters.
Present.
And Chair is present, okay. So this is our new, this is our first meeting where we're starting our new public participation policy protocol. So this meeting will start with approval of the meeting minutes, and we'll move on to public announcements and agenda item requests, which are just as they speak to, announcements and agenda item requests. And then we'll go into new business where we will have public comments, and then a consent agenda, and the public comments are limited to five minutes per person, per item. We have a consent agenda, we have two public hearings tonight, and then we'll have a regular business agenda meeting, and then we will close with public comments. Okay, so I'm seeking approval of the meeting minutes for August 8th, 2020, except it says August 4th, 2020 on the meeting minutes, so motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, any edits or changes to the meeting minutes at all? Edits and changes, the same thing. Peter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the second page, second to last paragraph, after the first sentence, which starts with "by Chairman Kokolas requested", I'd like to add an additional sentence that would say, "Review the status of any towns on Cape Cod using the exemption and compare and contrast to the needs of Chatham", and I said that during the meeting.
Okay, do you want to, Shauna, did you get that okay?
All set.
Okay, great. All right, any others? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, vote to approve, and we'll start with Selectman Castro.
Aye.
Selectman Dinkins.
Aye.
Selectman Meters.
Aye.
Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
The chair says aye, so those are approved 5-0-0. Okay, great. All right, public announcements and agenda item requests, I have a couple, and then I'll reach out to my fellow board members and then poll the public for any other additions. As you know, the census is underway right now and it ends on September 30th, and we are looking at extremely low numbers for the Cape, for the county, and for the state itself. So Chatham has 34%, Barnstable County is at 47.5%, and the state's at 65.8%. The census is important to, on many reasons. It shows, you know, it gives us a count of who is here in this community. It helps us with funding and for our representation on the state and in Congress, and it's very important that we all participate. I am, I'm going to read what is happening next week so that you know. There are two mobile questionnaire assistance teams for the census that are coming to Chatham. On 8/25, they will be set up in front of the library from 10 to 1, and 8/27, they will be in front of Town Hall from 11 to 2, so they'll have information and help on filling out the census. The COA, I know, has done some outreach on their membership, and I'm encouraging all of us as selectmen to reach out to the folks that we know to make sure that we get counted in town. I believe we also have it on our website and some social media that's happening. The town, the community update has information on it as well. It's really important, and I'm hoping that we'll see some changes in numbers, but if we don't, we really should be thinking about how to do better or some additional outreach as a town to be able to get our numbers up there. It's really, really important to us as a community. The other things that I have to announce tonight, and it's with regret, that I announced the passing of Fred Crimmens. Fred served on the Town Manager's COA Working Group. He was added to the group to review the Stepping Stones property as one of the petitioners. I also know that he was a pretty avid pickleball player in town. The other is the passing of Bill McClellan. Many of you might not know Bill, but Bill was one of the initial members of the Chatham Cable Committee, and he spent 12 years on the Chatham School Committee. He was also one of the principal planners, and some of you may know Cory, and I know that Jeff may know and perhaps Dean, of the Close Enough Construction Company. That was the group that created colorful floats during the Fourth of July parades to parody town issues back in the 80s and 90s. And so he was one of the folks there. So I just want to send our condolences from the Town of Chatham to the McClellan and Crimmens families today. Thank you. Are there any other additional public announcements or agenda item requests? Cory, I see your hand up, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to kind of follow up on the census topic you brought up. It is very, very important. We really need to kind of do a full-court press at this point, and if possible, I'd like to kind of give, you know, updates at our next couple Board of Selectmen meetings. We have a very short window for this to wrap up, so if we can, every, you know, at our meeting, just kind of get an update on numbers if at all possible to kind of encourage people to say, you know, we got to get that percentage up there. It's very, very important for us. So if we can just keep on top of those numbers and do the public outreach and everything else that we have in place, I think it's critical for us as a community, so, but thank you.
Great, Jill, I see your hands up. Jill?
Yes, thank you. In your packet, there's a flyer about how do you want to vote in the state primary election, and I wanted to note that there is a secure ballot box here at 549 Main Street where people can deposit their ballots, and those who wish to request them by mail can do so until Wednesday, August 26. And our in-person voting is beginning on Saturday, August 22. With the mail-in ballots, there is an opportunity to track your ballot, and that can be found on the state's website, and we also have that information on the town's website. That's it.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you. I see that Jeff has his hand up, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks. Just back to the census for a second. I actually filled it out online over the weekend and got a follow-up call from the census today. So it was very easy, I didn't get a card in the mail, I just signed on online, and it was very easy to do so. If folks want to just get online and get the census done, it would be, it's very, very slick. And they do follow up, they followed up with questions today, it was interesting. I doubted who it was when they called me because, you know, everybody's so paranoid, but it was them. Anyway, I suggest getting online, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Any other selectmen have anything that they want to mention? Okay, Dr. Dunkinson, I see your hand up, and then I'll turn to the remote participants, public remote participants. Hi, hi there.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to announce that yesterday afternoon's Board of Health meeting, the Board of Health voted to rescind the swimming ban that's been in effect at Andrew Harding's Lane Beach, that little kind of private neighborhood beach, if you will. The Board had instituted a swimming ban back in 2011 due to strong currents and the steep drop-off of that area. As I'm sure you recognize, since the inlet has moved further south, those conditions have changed dramatically. The Board reviewed it last night with myself and the Harbor Master and subsequently voted to rescind that swimming ban, so the signs were taken down today. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Bob. Okay, any public announcements or agenda item requests from the remote participants? And I'll take a poll of names and then call you back prior. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, our first item in new business is public comments, and this is a period where you may be able to comment on any of the agenda items in our packet as a public person. Dean, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something because in your opening remarks, I thought you said that each individual would be limited to five minutes per person, per item, but I think the policy that we voted in says per person in total.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the clarity. Okay, is there anybody within, in the public that wants to speak? I have, Cory has his hand up.
Florence Selden.
Okay, Florence. Anybody else? Cory, your hand was, Steve Buckley, okay, Stephen. Anyone else? Okay, Cory, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just a mechanical question, since this is our first meeting with our new policy. I'd already, I emailed you yesterday, and you're aware that I'm going to be requesting that one of the items in the consent agenda get pulled out, so I didn't know if that should be put forth earlier, or I know we're trying to work out the, this is meeting one with the new policy, so I just want to throw that out there for efficiency purposes.
Yep, I know that you are asking to pull that agenda item, which we will discuss first from the consent agenda, and, but anybody that wants to speak to any of the items may do so, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to turn to the public for public comments. Florence Selden, Selectman Selden?
Yes, thank you. I am going to be speaking. I'm speaking to, speaking to Hyden C. Free, the special legislation. Today, today is an historic day because exactly 100 years ago, Tennessee became the required 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, paving the way for final certification. On June 4th, 1920, the U.S. Senate passed the following proposed amendment to the Constitution. "The right of citizens of the United States to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. Congress shall have power to enforce this article by appropriate legislation." But it required ratification by 36 states to make this the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. Illinois was first, followed by Wisconsin. Massachusetts was seventh, and finally, it came down to Tennessee. The Tennessee Senate ratified it by a margin, a majority of 21, but the House was split. On August 18th, following several procedural votes, the roll call began. One person who had been opposed to it, Harry Burns, that morning received a letter from his mother saying, "Be a good boy and help Mrs. Cat." Mrs. Cat was the president of the National American Suffrage Women's Association. And so he changed his vote, making the vote in favor 48 to 47. And then one more voice was heard, a man by the name of Banks Turner, who also was opposed. He voted yea, making the vote 49 to 47. But the opponents were unsatisfied and tried a whole bunch of shenanigans, but finally, the governor signed the ratification certificate on August 24th and sent it to Secretary of State Dean Birch Colby in Washington, DC. It arrived in the early morning of August 26th, and Secretary Colby signed the proclamation of the 19th Amendment at 8:00 a.m. in his own home, thus enfranchising 26 million women in America. His momentous act was not witnessed by suffragists or recorded with photographs or movies, and he used only one pen. But news got out, and by end of day, 16 women in Chatham had marched into the town clerk's office to register and became the first women in town to become eligible to vote in a federal election. Their signatures are recorded in the Town Hall in the record, and I'd like to read off their names. The first signature was that of Edna Hardy, who was the head librarian at the time, followed by Grace Vincent, Gladys Atwood, Helen Kendrick, Louise Nickerson, I'm sorry, Edith Nickerson, Lottie Loveland, I'm reading their signatures from the book, Louise Vanner, Ellen Perry, Gladys Atkins, Annie Shepherd, Essie Hopkins, Mary Eldridge, Helen Hopkins, Gertrude Berry, and Maddie Kendrick. And so I thank you for putting this request to the state legislator for a name change on the agenda on a very fitting day, and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence, very much for, so our next, there's another request, Stephen Buckley?
Okay, I'm unmuted, okay, thank you. Item upcoming under new business, business agenda. Item 1A is non-regulatory board slash committee slash commission meetings. And in the packet, there's a, an email that was sent out to committee chairs about how to request the ability to meet remotely. And so it says, "If you feel that the committee needs to convene a meeting in the next six weeks, please email me," meaning Shauna Neely, "the proposed agenda items, and I will present it to Jill." So I guess, according to this, it's the, the town manager will decide whether or not something is worth meeting as far as committees go, which I think is a lot of deference to that now that we're several months into the emergency. But the part I wanted to comment on also was the fact that if approved, you will be contacted by Craig Rowe, IT Director, to discuss remote meeting requirements and training. And I would like to suggest that rather than wait till the last week or the last minute before a committee is done, that, that training be available on a regular basis so that we can, we won't get caught off guard, and people will be prepared so that when their meetings, their committee meetings, and I'm on the committee, that we'll be all ready to step in, and we won't spend the first half hour trying to figure out what button to push. So, or longer. So anyway, that's my suggestion, is that there, that it will not require approval by committee or by the town manager, but that the IT department offer that to any committee member who wants to be trained on MS Teams. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other public participants want to comment on any of our items for discussion this evening?
Do you have your computer here? Can I borrow it?
I'm sorry, if you're on, could you please mute your mic? Thank you. Or your phone? Okay. Any others that, are there any other participants that want to speak to any of the business, any of the agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. And Cory, do you want to make that formal request to pull that particular item from, from the consent agenda? And then I'll go through what's left.
So moved, yes, please.
Okay, so we're moving item one from the consent agenda, which is acceptance of the beach donation for Ryder's Cove Outlook Harwich-Chatham Working Group.
Yeah, just to clarify, I'm pulling, I'm requesting it pulled so it could be, stand on its own merit, and that these individual, bringing this, individual or individuals bringing it forward have an opportunity to make any presentation they seem fit. And I'm just looking for consistency on bench donations. So I have no issue with it, but I think it deserves to be a standalone item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Peter, go ahead. Please wait to be recognized, Ms. Cotton. Hold on just a moment. Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want a little clarification on that. I understand what Cory's doing. I don't have a problem with that because they're both standing on their own. But if we, I thought we were going to take each of these individuals, then vote on them as a group. If that's not what a consent agreement is, are we just going to go with them and then say, "Yeah, we agree"? Go ahead. I'll let Cory speak.
Go ahead, Cory.
No, no, no. I was hoping, this is why I emailed the chairman ahead of time to hopefully avoid any efficiency. I'm just, on a philosophical basis, I think bench donations, usually, you know, there's a lot of time and effort and motions that are tied to these, that if there's not an opportunity for an applicant to give their formal presentation, I think we're shorting them the opportunity. You know, I think we had a bench donation recently that, you know, the family was very emotional about it, and I just think that a bench donation mechanically, that they should be allowed to have a presentation. I have no opposition to this whatsoever, but I just think as a matter of process that bench donations should be a standalone item. They make their presentations. We hear, you know, they have the opportunity to speak on that item, not earlier during the, you know, public comment process. I think there's a little disconnect with it. I just, I just like the process better. I'm not making it a bigger deal than, you know, this is becoming. I just want a standalone efficient process.
So what we're going to do is we're going to pull that out. We're going to make the presentation, and I believe the presenter is here to speak to the issue. We'll vote on that, and then we'll move to the consent calendar. And I'm trusting Selectman DeCaster will correct me if I'm, if I'm.
That's fine. I think you're doing it correctly.
Okay.
And we'll vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
Yeah, we'll vote on the rest. Okay. So the item that we're taking out is acceptance of the beach donation for Ryder's Cove Overlook by the Harwich-Chatham Woodworking Group. They've completed two mahogany benches to be placed at Ryder's Cove Overlook, and the benches are dedicated in the memory of Richard Clifford and Joseph Lyman. And I believe that Ms. Barbara Cotton is on the call, and if she'd like to speak to this, we're happy to hear from you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, very well.
Very good. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Barbara Cotton, Chatham resident, and I've come to ask the selectmen's consent to accept two six-foot mahogany benches made by the Chatham Harwich Woodworking Group. The beautiful mahogany benches will be installed at the Marconi Ryder's Cove Park Triangle after it is made ready for the public. The Chatham Harwich Woodworkers donated their time and talent, creating comfortable, beautifully made benches for the site, and the Friends of Marconi Park Fund will pay for the supplies. Community preservation funds, except approved at Maytown Meeting in 2019, will be used once COVID-19 restrictions on town projects are lifted. I want to thank the Chatham Harwich Woodworkers for donating their skills to create one-of-a-kind wooden pieces. Their projects must meet their criteria that the finished product will benefit the community. Both the benches will be dedicated to longstanding Chatham Harwich woodworkers who sadly passed away recently. There will be a plaque for Richard Clifford, who we all remember as the creator of Drop the Cod at First Night. Rich sadly passed away December 6, 2019. There will also be a plaque for Joseph Lyman, who created numerous outstanding wooden works of art for the Chatham Harwich communities, several being the display cases at the Marconi Museum and the bench at the Orpheum Theater. Joseph Lyman sadly died of COVID-19 this summer. The Friends of Marconi Park and the woodworkers are asking you to accept these bench donations. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any questions for Barbara from the board? Dean, go ahead.
I don't ever, I actually do have one question. I'm fully supportive of this, and I think, Barbara, this is probably the cherry on top of your project that you've been working on for so many years, if it ever gets completed. Maybe this question is better directed to the town manager. So these are mahogany benches. Well, what, what kind of wood is used on the benches, for example, in Chase Park or elsewhere in town? This is pretty elegant, I think, to have them out of mahogany. Do we know? Are they teak or?
I would have to look. I think there's teak, mostly teak in other places. I think this might be the first for mahogany.
Right.
Orpheum Theater is mahogany?
Mahogany?
Yes.
This is wonderful. I'm very supportive of it. Thank you.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very familiar with this, and I think Dean said it right. Barbara's been working on this, it's before I was around. And just as a point, you know, she mentioned it, but the park and the walking trails and all of this have been approved by a town meeting in 2019. And I'd like to make the motion to accept the donation of two memorial benches from the Harwich-Chatham Woodworking Group for placement at Ryder's Cove Overlook.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? All right, well, Jeff, go ahead.
Barbara, thank, thank you for your efforts, and thank you to the woodworkers. It's, they're going to be, they're going to be beautiful benches, I'm sure, in a beautiful location. So, good work, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. We can't wait for the trails. We'll take a, we'll take a roll vote. We'll start with Jeff first.
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So it is approved 500. Thank you very much. To the woodworkers group. Okay, our next, thank you, yeah, congratulations. Our next is the consent agenda, which is, there's two items in this agenda, and they consist of, all about the election, I believe. Yeah. So we have the September 1, 2020 state primary warrant signatures, and those will just set the place and time for the state primary, and then the appointments of our, of constable and registrars, and that would be a reappointment of Benjamin J. Nickerson until June 30, 2023. May I have, may I have a motion to approve? Go ahead, Dean.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the balance of the consent agenda. I do have a question for Shauna about the items.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Dean, go ahead and ask Shauna your question.
Shauna, can we sign the warrant, I'm sorry, yeah, warrant electronically, or do we have to come by in person to sign?
No, Julie said it's all right to do electronically.
Okay, thank you.
Right. All right, so we have a motion and a second. So I'll start with Jeff.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we're moving on to public hearings. We have two this evening. One is a transfer of a seasonal alcohol beverage restaurant license, Gardner Restaurant, Inc., to TPJ Restaurant Group. And the other is for a new entertainment license, indoor live amp music for the same restaurant, TPJ Restaurant Group on 1260 Main Street, doing business as Pates Restaurant. So Cory, would you read the first hearing notice, and then we'll discuss that item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is hereby given, and the Chatham Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 18, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. remotely through the Microsoft Teams application to consider a request for a transfer of the seasonal all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Gardner Restaurants Incorporated, DBA Pates Restaurant, Robert A. Gardner, manager, to TPJ Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Pates. Christopher Matheson, manager, 1260 Main Street, Chatham, Massachusetts, 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sign the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much, Cory. Are the applicants on the call tonight? Do we have any representations from Pates Restaurant here tonight?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman. This is Jamie Norcross, representing TPJ Restaurant Group.
Hi, Jamie, welcome. Any questions for Jamie or for Shauna tonight from this board? Any questions at all? Okay, any, and this is a public hearing, so we'll reach out to the remote participants to see if there's any questions from the remote participants on this issue.
Steve Buckley.
Steve Buckley? Okay. All right. Stephen, I'm going to let Jamie speak, Mr. Norcross speak first about the application, and then we'll ask your questions. Okay? So Jamie, is there anything you want to add or say about the application?
Please, Madam Chair, I'll be brief. Two of the owners of TPJ, Tom Johnson and Dan McLaughlin, are also on the call this evening as well. My clients, my clients recently purchased Pates from the Gardner family, who had a long and very successful run with Pates Restaurant. My clients have been doing a lot of work to the outside of the building, which I'm sure everyone has seen driving by, and also to the interior. Currently, they're open for takeout only, but hope to open for inside dining very soon. My clients have a lot of experience in the restaurant industry on Cape Cod, including currently with Chapin's Restaurant and Dennis and the Pearl and Wellfleet. They've also hired a lot of experienced employees, including Chris Matheson, who, as you read, will serve as manager for the liquor license, and I'm sure many of you know Chris from his many years at the Squire and the Delmar. And again, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Dean, and then we'll go to the remote participants. Go ahead.
Thank you. I read the material, looks to be in order. I just had one question of Jamie or the applicants. Do you plan on offering outside dining once you open up for superior dining, as some of the other restaurants have given them endemic situation? Are you going to confine it to indoor dining?
I believe the plan right now is just to do indoor dining.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Stephen, you had a question or a comment? Stephen Buckley?
Yep, thank you. I got a question first, I guess, because it involves an entertainment license with live indoor amplified music.
Stephen, that's going to be our next.
Oh, I see, that's a separate one.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, so hold your thoughts and your question.
Well, anyway, regarding the outdoor or whatever, as people may have noticed, the, well, I live right behind Pates Restaurant, and so we share essentially a parking lot between our condo building parking and their parking. There, you can't, there's an imaginary line that goes down the middle of the parking lot, so to speak. But anyway, so we, over the years, past 12 years, I guess, Bob Gardner and we've worked together to make sure that people don't park in the wrong spots and the flow works and so forth. I just, I just wanted to point out that we look, that we as neighbors look forward to working under the extraordinary circumstances as far as, you know, the new, as far as the drive-through that they're having right now, or if there's something in the future. But, and also, by the way, I think they might have to adjust the, the outdoor sprinkler system so it goes on after midnight, according to the new rules. Just a little note there. Thank you very much. I'll wait until the next amplified, the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public participants have any questions or comments on this here, at this hearing?
That didn't have a whole lot to do with the license transfer, did it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this license?
Move approval as requested.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote for this hearing item. Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay, the liquor license transfer has been approved 500. Okay, we have the second public hearing, and this is to, and we'll let Cory, again, the clerk, read the agenda items. I mean, the public hearing. Thank you, notice.
Public hearing notice. Notice is hereby given, the Chatham Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 18, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. remotely through the Microsoft Teams application to consider a request for a new entertainment license for indoor live amplified, amplified music for TPJ Restaurant Group LLC, DBA Pates, Christopher Matheson, manager, 1260 Main Street, Chatham, Massachusetts, 02633. All interested parties are encouraged to attend. Sign the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Cory. Would the applicants on the call or Attorney Norcross like to speak to this application? Because this is a new.
Yes, please, Madam Chair, Jamie Norcross again. So just to give you a little bit of information on sort of their vision for the restaurant, the owners envision having live entertainment for dinner guests. They see a real void in town for a live entertainment option for an older crowd. Their plan is to have really light music, which would be a singer with a guitar or a two- or three-piece band that will provide some entertainment to the folks enjoying dinner or people that come in to order an appetizer and enjoy the music. The focus of the restaurant is going to be on the food, but they see the live entertainment is providing a nice addition to the restaurant experience that they're looking to provide. My clients, who I mentioned before, have restaurant experience, also have experience with live entertainments at Chapin's and the Pearl. And they're very mindful of making sure they do not impact the neighbors. And so, they're installing a state-of-the-art sound system that allows the music to be played at a lesser volume while still heard throughout the restaurant. They've also chosen a location for the performers that's in a brick alcove in the middle of the building so that it helps ensure music does not travel outside the building. So, again, this is really just seen as being sort of a light entertainment option, something nice for the people coming into dinner. It'll be helpful for my client's business while also providing what they think will be a nice feature for the town of Chatham. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That, okay, so that's the intent of the business plan right now, to go forward with a light entertainment. But the, the application itself, Shawna, if I may, ask Shawna, our licensing person, that would open it up to live entertainment for any kind of live entertainment? Correct?
You can put any restrictions on the license that you, you would like.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Jeff, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, yes, thank you, Mr. Norcross. Appreciate your comments and your input. I did have a question, where, where in the restaurant? And I think you answered that. It's in the, in the, in the brick part in the back, kind of? Is that where it would be located?
Right, in the middle, right-hand side in the back. So, there's really no windows in that area and they think it's a good location in terms of muting the sound.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, I think it is a good location as well. I just, and you maybe haven't, they haven't done this yet, but has anybody, anybody tested, actually had the musicians in there and tested the loudness? The thing that concerns me is, is the loudness and the neighbors, that's all. I think having entertainment there is a good idea. It's certainly worthy of a try from a business model perspective, but I just worry about neighbors, that's all.
I don't know. Dan or Tom, do you happen to know the answer to that question?
Tom, you there? We, we have not.
Tom, I think you're on mute.
You're on mute, Tom.
Is that better?
Yes.
You hit the, hit the mute button. Yeah, we haven't tested it as yet, but I do think it's important to note that there was an entertainment license in place at, at the property for many, many years. I think 20-plus years. So, you know, I'm not, I know that, in talking to Bob, that there wasn't sort of an endemic issue up until, I think it was 2008 or '09 or '10 that he let it lapse. So, I don't think there's a history necessarily with the old license of any sort of issues. And, and also, too, I think it's important to note that we've spent considerable amount of money with a sound engineer to ensure you can fill the room with sound without, without being loud. And I suspect that some of the groups that come in won't even amplify. They'll plug into our system, which I think will allow for, you know, higher quality spread of music rather than a single source. So, anyways, we're, we're pretty thoughtful about it. But to answer the question, we haven't, we haven't tested it necessarily.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Peter, and then Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and I think it's a, a good idea. I understand, I understand, I think I feel, understand where, where you're gonna be located. If I read this correctly, the bar is now gonna be in the, the bar, you moved where the bar is now, which was sort of in the front, and moved it in the back where the, where the band would be. That, that, that correct?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so you've got a lot of furniture and everything else around it. I mean, it'd be easy to, to, to check that out, but it would seem that a lot of the music or the way you're gonna do it is going to be, it's gonna mute that. That's one. And two, we're not talking about, you know, a rave coming in there. Talking about something that, that would be available for dinner. So, in general, I think if you guys make sure it doesn't bother the neighborhood, I have no problem with it. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
I think, I, I think it's a great idea, too. I, I actually used to enjoy Pates, going into Pates when, when this guy named Chico used to play guitar there and, and back when I was younger. It was, it was entertaining and it was a nice ambiance. But I, I also am concerned about the neighbors and I'm wondering if we should put a restriction to 2:10 PM or something similar to that, that the entertainment license only can be applicable till 10 PM. That way, it ensures or complies with our noise law, you know, for, for the neighborhood. Just throwing that out there for thoughts. And I'm waiting to see who the next person for comment. I think it was Dean. Dean, go ahead.
Thank you. I, I was just gonna ask, you know, what hours were you planning and hoping to have the music played until, this is sort of consistent with what Shereen was just suggesting. And also, have you had any conversation with any of the neighbors? I know we're gonna be hearing from one shortly. So, I just wondered if there had been any outreach on this issue.
Yeah, we've, we've actually reached out for the head of the condo association, had numerous conversations. I actually had a personal conversation with Steve as well. And so, we do have a line of communication open, certainly. As far as the hours, you know, we're intending to serve to sort of 9:00, 9:30. So, we were hopeful that, you know, we could, we could extend service for folks that wanted to have, you know, dinner and then perhaps have a dance, if you can go home, you know, nothing. We're, we're not interested in creating a bar scene. We're really sort of more interested on sort of another, you know, sort of a pleasant transition for folks. And we certainly are not interested in sort of a late-night bar, bar scene. That's not our intent here.
What is, what is actually gonna go where the, the bar was in the past? What's gonna have, what's located?
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be a dining space where the current bar is. Yeah, dining space.
Have you had, what kind of response or reaction have you had from the head of the condo association?
I mean, she's been generally supportive of everything, you know. We, we actually invited the condo association over for, for tasting and she said she might rather do it in her courtyard. It's been pretty supportive. And I think, you know, even my conversation with Steve, although I don't wanna put words in his mouth, you know, our restaurant experience and our relationship with neighbors in other places, I think, sort of speaks volumes in how we understand the dynamic here. We also understand that if there's issues, the selectmen are, you know, certainly within their right to, you know, to no longer issue that license in the future. So, we, we are sort of seasoned in this respect and, and know how important it is to continue the conversation with, with the condo association and then our neighbor, for sure.
Are you comfortable with a 10 o'clock shut-off?
I mean, I, I think it would be just a little bit disappointing to us because if, if the final sort of reservations are at 9:30, there may be folks that finish at, at 10:00 or 10:30 and, you know, might be disappointed that why couldn't I participate? So, I don't think we'd, we'd be disappointed in some level of, you know, restriction on time. However, it seems, might be just a little early is my sort of initial reaction.
10:00, 10:30 for you? 10:30?
I mean, if we could start, you know, if we could start at 11 and understand that we're, we understand that we're gonna be very sensitive to input in our, when we, when we kick this off. I mean, I would ask the selectmen to consider at least till, till that time.
Shawna, can I ask a question, Madam Chair, Shawna?
Sure, absolutely.
What limit, what time limits do we have on some of the other restaurants in town? Is it 10 or 11 or the ones downtown, for example, the Squire or whatever?
Squire is, is much later. The most recent restriction has been on Knots Landing, which I believe was restricted till 10.
All right. Thank you. I have no other questions, I guess.
Okay, any other comments or questions for the applicants from, from the board? Okay, any comments or questions from the public, the remote participants? Stephen? Did you say you wanted to speak to this issue? Anybody else want to speak to this issue?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I know that. Yeah, I got you done. Okay, anybody other than Mr. Buckley want to speak to the issue? Okay, go ahead, Stephen.
Well, now that the board has been able to discuss this and so forth, I'm glad. I, I don't really have anything, any comments to add. Just an example of where it's better to have public comment after some discussion by the board. Thank you.
All right, any other comments or motion? Entertained a motion on this issue. Dean, I see your hand up and Corey's. Questions or motion? What are we, where are we headed?
I'm gonna make a.
Okay, go ahead. Dean, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a comment and offer a motion. I, I think it's, I, I was a patron of the old Pates. Some part of me is gonna miss it. I, I was, I was happy to hear Jamie mention that your, your clientele was gonna be part of the old, the older segment of the. We're gonna still be welcome there, I guess.
Me, too.
Looking over at the menu, you've got, you've got some items that I, that I think I would enjoy. So, and I think it's really terrific that the restaurant will continue in business and that the, the folks that are running them, I don't know, know any of you, but I, I'm happy to hear that there's some local ownership. And I guess Bob Gardner is still gonna own the, the, the fee and the property because of the lease situation. So, I, I'd be willing to give the, the restaurant an opportunity to try an 11 o'clock music close and see how it goes. If there are any concerns, we'll hear about it and, and then we can adjust it. So, I'm gonna move approval of this license request for entertainment with a stipulation that the entertainment must cease at 11 o'clock PM.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
Do we have further discussion on the, on the motion from the board? Corey, go ahead.
No, I, I think the 11 o'clock time is a very appropriate benchmark for, for starting them off, so.
Okay. So, hearing no other discussion, we take, Jeff, go ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support the 11 o'clock, but I think we're being a little inconsistent as a board because it was 10 o'clock at Knots Landing. But I'll support the 11 o'clock and I wish the new ownership at Pates very well. It's one of my favorite spots in town as well. And I wish you well. I echoed Selectmen de Castro's sentiments. I'm glad you guys are reopening hopefully here shortly and you're in for business, so it's good. So, I am gonna, I am gonna support 11, but we are being inconsistent. That being said, perhaps we'll hear from Knots Landing, who knows?
Okay. Dean, another comment?
Yeah, about Knots Landing. I, I don't recall that the applicant there was pressing for anything beyond 10 o'clock and was happy. But if they should want to, we could certainly entertain an adjustment. So, I, so just leave it at that.
All right, great. Let's take a vote.
Can I say something in closing?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
We, we did have prime rib as a special the last four nights, so I just wanna be clear. In closing.
Thank you so much for that. Let, let's take a vote on this, guys. We've got a few more things to deal with. Very happy for you guys and congratulations. Selectmen, we're gonna take a vote now. I'm gonna roll call. Selectmen Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectmen Dunkins.
Aye.
Matters.
Aye.
Selectmen de Castro.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you, congratulations on the opening and very best of luck to all of you. It's nice to see local people, local people working hard and, and keeping the economy moving and, and people employed in the town. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. And that concludes our public hearing portion of our meeting. Now, we're going to move on to our business agenda, which we have five items on that agenda. And the first order of business is coronavirus COVID-19 update from Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Dunkinson, and our town manager, Jill Goldsmith, with two items to discuss, non-regulatory board committee commission meetings and community center reopening update, park after-school program status. Dr. Dunkinson, welcome again.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just a quick update on the numbers as we do with these updates. Right now, worldwide, we have 21.9 million cases of COVID-19. We have 776,000 deaths have been reported. In the U.S., we have a little over 5.4 million cases and slightly over 171,000 deaths. The U.S. continues to lead the world in the number of cases as well as the number of deaths. And we continue to average around 25% of both worldwide cases and worldwide deaths. In Massachusetts, as of this afternoon, we had 123,841 cases and 8,842 deaths. And as we've reported to the board previously, the information we now get from the states is a little bit different than what we were getting before. So, that's why you haven't seen the kind of daily graphic updates that we've been getting because the states switched their reporting last week to basically on a daily basis, only be reporting the number of confirmed cases and only reporting the number of probable cases once a week, where prior to last week, they were reporting both sets of that information on a daily basis. Similarly, they're only reporting information on Barnstable County or down at the county level once a week now, where again, before, they were reporting that information daily. So, making it a little bit harder to keep people up to date on what the latest information is. In terms of Chatham specific, we currently have indicated we have 23 cases, none of which are active cases right now. So, all the cases that we were aware of in Chatham have now cleared, meaning they've either finished their quarantine period or they finished their isolation period. So, we are not currently tracking any active cases, which is a good thing. And we, as I previously reported, we now are aware of two confirmed deaths of Chatham residents that have taken place since this started back last spring. Just a quick update on where we are. You know, there hasn't been a whole lot of other new information coming out of the state, if you will, since last week when the governor updated the gatherings order, reduced the number, the size of outdoor gatherings from 100 down to 50. He did maintain the indoor gatherings at 25 or eight people per thousand square feet. So, there really hasn't been a whole lot of change there in terms of the information coming out of the state other than some clarifications and whatnot, a lot of discussions around schools. Because as you know, the schools were required to submit their plan to the state and you're gonna hear more of that later in tonight's agenda. So, in our, we, twice-weekly calls with DPH and others, a lot of the questions have to do with schools and how that's gonna be handled. In terms of locally in Chatham itself, we've completed pretty much all the physical alterations to the town buildings. We've received about 50% of the materials for the annex in terms of desk shields and partitions. And I was told today by WB Mason that the rest of that should be in our hands by Friday or Monday, at which point, we'll get together with the folks at the DPW, we'll get the rest of that equipment installed around people's desks and between desks. And then we're working with the town manager on a soft opening, which would be by appointment only, that will probably take place towards the end of this month or early in September. And then we'll see how that goes for a period of time and then we'll make a decision on reopening town offices to the general public. But as we've updated you on previously, with one exception being the community center, pretty much all other town functions are taking place. People are, are getting their permits, they're able to apply for permits, they're getting inspections done, they're getting their beach and dump stickers. The Council on Aging has, has been reaching out to folks on a regular basis, either by phone or through virtual meetings. The food pantry projects are still taking place. So, pretty much all the town services, with the exception of those things that take place in the community center that, you know, really require face-to-face contact, if you will. Pretty much everything is, else is taking place. So, we don't feel that we're necessarily under any real urgency to reopen town offices to the public. Because as you can imagine with downtown, you know, a large majority of the foot traffic in that building is simply, you know, where's the restrooms? Where's the, you know, Chamber of Commerce? Where's a good place to eat? And right now, you know, we wanna protect town staff as well as the public. And those questions can be answered in more remote ways. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Dr. Dunkinson from the board? No? No, okay. We, did we lose Jeff or see? Go ahead, Peter. I see Jeff. Go ahead, Peter.
Here. I didn't know if Jill's gonna bring it up. How's the beach situation over the last week?
It's been raining, but there have been times that it's been pretty, you know, pretty nice out there, especially when it turned today. I was just wondering if Schoolhouse Pond is all right or are the other ones seem to be okay? But what's your thoughts?
Yeah, the board discussed Schoolhouse Pond last night. As you're probably aware, a number of changes have been made at Schoolhouse. Concrete blocks were put in blocking off a number of the parking spaces, as well as several blocks were put around the perimeter to keep people from parking, you know, on the grassy areas, as well as the new signage and enforcement went up on Samurai Road. And so a number of members of the Board of Health have been down there on a regular basis. I've been down there, you know, passing through every couple of days or so. And so far, the consensus was it seems to be working much better. And in addition to that, Park and Rec also has a COVID monitor down there every day now. So the feedback has been very good in the last, say, week to 10 days since all those changes have been put in place. The other thing, quite honestly, that's helped out is with our drought, the pond level has dropped substantially, and so there now is a lot more beach area for the folks that are there to spread out on. You know, at the very beginning of the season, there was almost no beach. Now there's probably three or four times as much beach area. So that has gone very well. There was one incident, not last Sunday, but the Sunday before that where the park, where Harding's Beach was closed for a period of time, not because the parking lots filled up, but because they kind of maxed out on social distancing and people on the beach. You know, after some people had then left, they were able to reopen for more people about an hour and a half or so later. But other than that, those are the only reports that we've had, and you know, I have regular conversations with Dan Tobin. So so far, all the beaches seem to be going pretty well.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Dr. Duncanson? Jeff, your hand's up, I see.
Just a quick question. Bob, you reported on the pop-up testing that four were negative out of 11 and seven had results still pending. Were all those seven results that were sent to Cape Cod Hospital, they all negative as well?
Yes, they all did, ended up coming back negative. Yep.
Excellent, excellent, good, thank you. Thank you very much.
The number count is really good news. That's, you know, that we're in such a great condition here. And I think we have to put a little kudos out to the public for complying and paying attention to this. It's really important, and I think our messaging really helped, and everybody, you know, should be very, very thankful that we're in such good shape as we are, Bob. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Dr. Duncanson? Okay, then we'll move on to our town manager, Jill, for your update.
Thank you. So the only, one thing I wanted to add as it relates to beaches is that we're starting to lose some of our lifeguards who are going back to school and have to shelter in place for their college. So what we're going to do is put on the website just an update of what beaches are guarded and which beaches are not. We're working very hard to have coverage for all the beaches, but we will possibly hit a point, maybe next week, where some beaches won't have coverage. So I just want to let you and the public know to check the website if there's any concerns for that. And I'm sure Dan Tobin, when he's back, will provide a report to the board. I don't have anything more to report other than what Bob had noted, but I do, we do have two agenda items under the COVID update that I wanted to speak about. If the chairman doesn't mind if we go to the non-regulatory board and committee commission meetings.
Please go forward, yes.
Okay, so I haven't received, or I hadn't received many requests for board, non-regulatory boards and committees and commissions to meet. And so Shauna had sent out an email to them, and we've heard in response that we know the Human Services Committee wanted to meet because they had issued RFPs for our service providers, and they wanted to talk about the results. Cultural Committee Commission as well had wanted to meet to review their grant applications and get that process started. And then I just heard from the Shellfish Advisory Committee Chairman that they would like to meet if there is an article placed on the special town meeting. As you know, there's a special town meeting by petition potentially to be called, and if there is that indeed called, they wanted, if that article, there's a lot of ifs here, is placed on the warrant, that they wanted the opportunity to meet, and I didn't see any issue with that either. And I know the Waterways Advisory Committee, we have bylaw, Waterways bylaws and regulations under reviews, and they might want to get started this fall on that for possibly a May 2021 town meeting date. And that doesn't have too heavy a load, and the heavy load is determined by the training that's needed to get the committee members comfortable using the Teams platform, which I think unfortunately we're going to be using for some time, and also for the staff load, workload, to get prepared and making sure that the staff were back in the office. And as Bob had mentioned, we're getting to that point. So certainly open for other committees. I haven't turned down any requests, it's just a matter of making sure that we have the staffing resources as well as the IT director available to train people. And as you know, it takes some time to get used to the platform. And my experience with the Summer Residence Advisory Committee, who were meeting weekly to move their recommendations, it still took, you know, five or 10 minutes to get everybody settled with the technology, not just being acquainted with the platform, but their own home technology and Wi-Fi. And so I think people are getting used to it, but it still does require training. And so that's it. The board had asked for me to update you on the meeting request, and those are all the requests that we've received to date.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill on that matter?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Dean. I had to dial in on my phone because my internet service went out.
Okay, Dean. Thank you.
So I didn't, I didn't hear Jill's presentation, but I did want to ask, it sounds like she did make some comment about meetings of advisory committees, and I don't know whether Mr. Buckley's comment was addressed, or question was addressed.
We haven't gotten to that yet. We haven't gotten that far. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay. All right. Sorry, guys, I'm out of frame here. Okay, I had to find the paper here. So Mr. Buckley had asked Jill that if the people were approved with the training, IT training be available immediately upon request of the committee chair.
Yes, so absolutely. And also for the staff liaison, because they're going to have to record the meeting and know what to do after the meeting is finished and gets sent over and uploaded to Channel 18. So we can start as soon as we get the request. I think that's, it's almost immediate, working with Shauna and Craig Rowe, and it's just a matter of trying to do small groups of training so that there's not a quorum, and individual trainings are available, and more importantly, trying to get the chairmans used to working on this platform and having to do roll call votes and post materials to accompany the agenda so the public can follow along at home.
Great, thank you. Dean, any other questions for Jill on that matter?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay, any other selectmen have any questions on this matter? Jeff, your hand's up. I didn't know if that was still up from the previous. I'll take it down for you. Oh, you got it. Okay. All right, Jill, do you want to give us an update on the community center reopening update and park after-school program status?
Sure. So we've had a few meetings occurring from March to June, and then we resumed those conversations. And we're primarily focused on the park program, and that's our after-school program, and working in partnership with Montomoy Community Services, Teresa Malone, on how to convene a program that could potentially again be in partnership with her, but within the limitations and guidelines set by the governor's orders, which are pretty challenging. So the staff for the park program had received the license to have the after-school program at the community center. And we also contemplated if we could have it off-site. So we had included the school superintendent on the conversations, and after the last meeting, it was determined that it was best to be at the community center, and how to set that up so we can have the kids who participate, again, fourth through seventh graders after school until 5:30, being kept in the same group or pod, and what the restrictions are for the number of children per instructors, and also have areas where, if there was an event, where they could be isolated. And tomorrow's meeting that we're having is including the public nurse and school nurse too to help us, I think it's a county nurse, to help us navigate how to set this up. So I don't have an announcement that we're all set. We're targeting September 14th along with the start of school, and I know that after tomorrow, we'll have some idea. There's a transportation limitation by the buses, the buses have certain maximum passenger capacity, and we're not sure we're going to be able to get a bus. And if we don't, how do we arrange for that transportation, or is it drop-off, or is there a way to, at least for the fourth grade kids, to escort them over? So we're looking at fall now, that's our, we're just taking baby steps at this, trying to get through the fall semester, and then we'll continue to evaluate it and provide advance notice for the participants for, you know, winter and moving into spring. It's much more complicated, I think, than I ever imagined, and that the community center, how it's situated, I think it works well, but it would work well only for the park program for after-school. We're also thinking about how to have some of the indoor adult sport activities, and we know pickleball is very popular, and how to have that, how to have them leave the building, have the area cleaned and fogged every night. So there's, it's just, as you can imagine, trying to disinfect and keep everything so that we prevent any kind of outbreak and deal with any potential positive cases if that does come. So I didn't have anything in writing because we're still fine tuning it, but the goal is to offer the program and work from the regular school guidelines and the state guidelines and the health guidelines. And it's a big group now, we're trying to be very inclusive for all the regulatory people involved, and I know that there's a connection between the participants and our staff, they did a survey, I think a few, either a few weeks ago or so, who would be interested, and we'll certainly do that outreach. And the last thing I can't tell you is the number of kids that will be participating in the program. I still, we still need to work that out through the building capacity and the number of instructors that we'll have.
Okay. Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill on the program and the community center? Corey?
Corey? Thank you, Madam. Not so much a question, just more of a comment. I appreciate the update. I do know, I mean, recently, as a parent, you know, we're all making decisions about our kids going back to school or not going back to school, based on the options that have been presented by the superintendent and the school committee. And I know the park program is a very important tool for many parents, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we keep planning, have plan or plans in place for whatever opportunities that may be allowed as we, you know, move forward, because there's a lot of unknowns. And if we can just have some plans in place, I think that it'd be important to our community to be prepared for different scenarios. So I appreciate the update, you know, fingers crossed that we can, you know, supply some kind of program, safe program with reasonable restrictions. So thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Any other comments or questions for Jill from the board? All right. Thank you, Jill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item under our business agenda is Montomoy Regional School District reopening update from Superintendent Scott Carpenter. Dr. Carpenter, welcome. I see you virtually, we haven't seen you for a while.
Thank you for having me.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I just want to give an update on our back-to-school plan for the upcoming school year, and also just some budget implications on how everything is playing out, particularly given that our two towns are in different places with regard to town meeting, where Chatham has had their town meeting and Harwich still has theirs to come. But we'll close with that, just first in terms of the back-to-school plan. I think even just listening to Jill's report, you got sort of a precursor on what some of the challenges are as we look towards reopening, and then definitely from Dr. Duncanson's report, just, you know, just some of the challenges that we have to, you know, keep in mind when it comes to COVID and safety. So in terms of our reopening plan, we have worked with staff and gotten feedback from parents on developing a plan that we put out. The, you know, safety is first and foremost at the top of that list, but we also want to make sure that we have a solid educational program regardless of whether we're in-person or distance learning. One of the things that I want to emphasize to our committee and also any that are, to the select board and any that are out there watching remotely, that, you know, we have as our, part of our strategic initiative with the district is to close achievement gaps. And when it comes to, you know, sort of looking back on this past spring, when it comes to what does distance learning look like for some of our families? You know, the distance learning has the potential actually to magnify achievement gaps, not close achievement gaps. And I've shared, I've shared with a number of people, just even what I've, you know, witnessed, you know, witnessed in my small little bubble, that, you know, I have two children that live next door to me, who, you know, have parents that need to work to put a roof over their head and food on the table, and they were, you know, younger elementary-aged children, you know, last year as the schools in the area were closed. And you can imagine what distance learning looked like for them, you know, where during the school day, there wasn't the supports at home to go and see education continue. And I really do think that there's a moral imperative for us to go and make sure that we're providing in-person education if we can do it safely. And one of the things that, you know, I'd like to just share with the board here is that in terms of safety, I believe that Montomoy schools are far better suited for in-person learning than most of the schools in the state and most of the schools in the nation for that matter. And this is for a number of reasons. First, you know, and this is, you know, this is where our towns have supported us with our budgets, but ever since I've come here, we have put, you know, put together budgets that have class sizes that are extremely reasonable compared to what class sizes look like in even other area Cape school districts or off-Cape. And that smaller class sizes, to begin with, positioned our district to look at six-foot spacing and making sure that we had at least six-foot spacing when we developed a reopening plan. The other thing that, you know, that we also benefit, we have fairly small enrollments within our school buildings. So when we bring students into school this coming fall, the cohorts, the size of the groups of kids that are actually walking into the buildings are going to be smaller than you find in comparable elementary schools, middle schools, or high schools. The third thing, you know, that I'm quite proud of is that, is that, you know, few superintendents, I think, could honestly say that every one of their rooftop units, their HVAC, you know, unit vents, all actually function in their school district. But we have been maintaining these buildings since I've gotten here so that every, you know, every HVAC system that we have is operational, and every window in every school building that is meant to be able to open can open. And I don't think there are a lot of districts that have buildings that are in that good shape that can go and, you know, that can go and say that. And then the last thing, as Dr. Duncanson mentioned, you know, the situation where, you know, where in terms of COVID, you know, average daily case rates here on Cape Cod, and particularly here in Chatham and also in Harwich, are extremely low and have been extremely low compared to other parts of the state, and definitely compared to what we're seeing, you know, transpire elsewhere nationally. In terms of our educational program that we have put forward, the Department of Education has required school districts to give every family an option. So we've surveyed families and said you could choose a pure distance learning model or have an in-person learning model. What we have strived for is to offer to families pre-K through grade seven, in-person every day if the family chooses, and then at the high school level to have it be in-person two out of every three days, with the third day, the students are actually in the class, and the class is streamed out live so that, you know, students can ask questions of the teacher, the teachers can ask questions of the students, the students are part of that class just remotely, which would help us bring some of the class sizes down. And, you know, when you build a high school schedule, some of the classes are a little bit larger than would allow for six-foot spacing. By having one-third of the kids not there on any given day, that will allow us to make sure that we have that six-foot plus spacing in every, in every one of our classrooms. So we've, we put out to that. So we've, we put out to that choice and asked parents to respond by, you know, last week. We have roughly 20, I think it's about 22% of the parents have selected a distance learning option. And, and the other 88% of, or sorry, the other 78% of the families have selected the in-person option. So you can imagine as you're putting together the educational program this year, we're essentially running two different Montomoy's. We have a, you know, we have a set of teachers now that we're having to dedicate for a distance learning option until this is all behind us and knock on wood sometime this year, it becomes behind, you know, COVID's distant memory. And then we have to allocate a staffing for in-person, you know, for in-person learning. So we're in the process of, of notifying teachers, you know, which one of those modes they'll be, you know, they'll be teaching in. We will then be starting school on September 14th. We were going to have a start of the school year just before Labor Day. But, but because the Commissioner of Education, I actually think wisely wanted to have 10 professional development days at the beginning of the school year so that all teachers are sort of prepared and trained during the professional development to be able to pivot on a dime. You know, so, you know, so you can imagine if, if any of you were superintendent and there's a, you know, COVID positive case that happens in a school, you want to be able to quickly transition to distance learning until everything is back to sort of a clear status and we can have the students back into our school buildings. So we'll be preparing for the school year under very different circumstances. It's, you know, given, you can imagine if you've ever gone into an elementary school classroom, at the front of the classroom, at the beginning of the day, the kids will gather on a carpet. You know, sitting across the thing and they'll have a morning meeting. And all of that now will have to be not on the carpet. Everybody's going to have to be six foot spaced. Everybody, all grade levels will be wearing masks. And, and it's going to create a different dynamic. We want to make sure that we're, you know, we're supporting, you know, students through this. And, you know, but it's, you know, I think our teachers are going to have to prepare for, you know, teaching differently as we go into this new school year for the in-person learning, along with teachers teaching differently when it comes to doing distance learning. But, but all that will begin September 14th for our students. I'll, I'll stop there before I jump into the budget. If anyone has any questions just on the educational program, since they're, they're a rather a bit of a non sequitur.
Thank you very much. Scott, that was an amazing amount of planning that the community is, you, your staff and, and everyone has had to do and to comply with state standards and the educational board, state educational board. I applaud the work that everybody has done on your team. And I know that on the reopening task force that I'm sitting on, that there's, the county is ready to support the school systems and, and to work with, work towards some, some goals. I guess they're going to be conducting some webinars soon to support data and bulk buying and all that. I just, I, 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 I'm not a parent of a child in school anymore. I'm a grandmother. And I, I see how hard kids have struggled with the social dis, you know, not being able to see people and, and how parents have really struggled with their work environment. And it's going to be a really tough challenge here for any parent to make the decisions that they have to make today. And it looks like you've put a good, a good support system in place for them all. I see that Jeff's hands raised. He's a former school committee member. Love to hear his thoughts on everything. And then Cory, and then we'll move down along the, the board. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Scott, thank you for your, your comments. I'll tell you, it's not, it, what a challenging time to be a superintendent, a teacher, a student, a parent, just totally unprecedented. I, the reopening is, is such a challenge. We go through it at our, at our clinic in Hyannis. And it's just so, they're, it's mind numbing how, how complex this gets very quickly. But I, I appreciated your comment about maybe we're a little braver down here because of our case rate. And, and I appreciate that. I think the Cape, and I'll be very guarded in my comments, the Cape and, and Chatham in particular, but the Cape as a whole has done fairly well because we've got an older population that's probably a lot more circumspect, et cetera, or a lot more careful. But I, I, I really am fearful at some point that we're going to, we're going to get somewhat too comfortable or some ambulant with respect to our approach to the, to the virus because it's so, can be so insidious. Just note what UNC did today and what Notre Dame is, is doing, announced today as well. They're, they're bagging in, in-person learning and they're going to all distance learning. So I, again, also appreciate your comment about how, hey, if that happens, we can turn on a dime because that's exactly what we need to do as a district and what, what you as a leader and what your teachers need to do as well. What students need to be prepared to do as well. The only other specific question, and I actually can't wait to get to the budget, Scott. We go from the sublime to the mundane. But really, what are the plans for cleaning the schools, Scott? I think I've had some questions. How, what's the plan for cleaning?
A definitely good question, Jeff. So with, with regard to cleaning, I, I, I think there are some school districts that are doing, you know, bringing students in the buildings Mondays and Tuesdays and they close for Wednesday for deep cleaning. And then their, kids are back in, you know, Thursdays and Fridays. And my response to that is we should be deep cleaning every single day. And, you know, so, so we, you know, we will be, you know, doing a, you know, a deep clean where, you know, where our custodians, ever since this had, you know, this has begun, our custodians, you know, have, you know, have been going around, you know, even, you know, before schools were closed. You know, you, you know, they were going around just wiping down high-touch areas, you know, with, you know, sort of like a Lysol product to, you know, to just disinfect things, you know, getting into the bathrooms, doing mid, you know, sort of midday, you know, cleanings of the bathrooms. We'll be, our bathrooms will get cleaned every, you know, every single hour on the hour. You know, the high-touch areas will, you know, be wiped down, you know, after, you know, after school. Every, you know, all, you know, all the surfaces will get wiped down. And we have purchased electrostatic foggers, you know, where the rooms get, will get fogged. You know, as the custodian's the last, you know, last piece of business before, you know, their shift, you know, their shift. You know, so, you know, so we'll be deep cleaning every space, you know, every space, every day. And then we'll also, you know, I, I, I think if we, if we want to go and see schools remain open, we, we as, as the community need to develop habits of mind to help keep the schools open. And I've been putting out, you know, emails to families on, you know, it's like, you know, that I, I, I put out an email a couple of weeks ago, you know, just saying, hey, you know, I, I, you know, and it, it, it's sort of spun off of, I, I stopped at, at the new taco shop in, in Chatham. And, and somebody grabbed me and said, you know, you know, our school's going to be opening. And, and, and my response was, you know, what we do as a community is going to determine if schools are open. And, you know, and it's, it's, it's like, it's like as long as we're wearing masks, we're maintaining different, you know, distance that we're, you know, we're being, you know, we're being mindful to, you know, to protect ourselves. You know, we're washing, you know, we're washing our hands. And the, and one of those things when it comes to cleaning the buildings is that we develop habits of mind within our children, all grade levels, to go and just clean their areas, you know. So we will have cleaning project, products in every classroom, you know, and, and we'll encourage students. When you come into the room, there'll be hand sanitizer, wash your hands, you know, wash off your, you know, wash off your workspace so that, again, instill those habits of mind so we can go and protect each other and ourselves.
Yeah, no, I think that's well said, Scott. So good luck to you and, and the staff and the students as well. And good luck. Good job. Thank you. Thank you.
Scott, before I move on, I, I had a quick question for you. There, there was a, it seems that we're getting an influx of real estate sales in town. And I heard that there's been new families that might have moved into town. Have you, what are the enrollment numbers looking for, for Chatham? I'm, I don't want to put you on the spot because I didn't, I should have emailed you earlier. Or have you seen people leaving the school system or people coming to the school system? What, what's been going on?
So, so it's, it's still pretty early to tell. And, and it's, and it's a little difficult to figure out what the enrollment is because we, we do have a set of parents who, because of all of this that's going on, are electing to homeschool. So, you know, which is, which is, which is relatively unique for just, you know, you know, where they're, they're like, you know, given the options, we just prefer to homeschool until this is over. So, you know, so it's, it's hard to kind of put your finger on it. We do have some evidence that, that, that there is some movement to come to the Cape. You know, come to Chatham, come to Harwich and either, you know, either to, you know, to move here permanently or, you know, maybe they have, you know, they have a, a summer house and, and to stay. And, and, and I think it's, it's, it's in part testament to my staff. I, I have an absolute great group of teachers that, that we, you know, that work in this district. And, and the distance learning plan that we had this past spring compared to what distance learning looked like most places off Cape and, and even on Cape, you know, the parents, the parents heard about what we had put in place compared to what they experienced and are looking at what our reopening plan is compared to what their reopening plan where, you know, whatever community they might be, be in. And we've seen families that are wanting to stay here. In fact, I was, it was, uh, just yesterday, I was walking out of my office and there was a family from, from Brookline that, that were asking us about our reopening plan and what, what we're doing compared to, and they're like, wait, you know, we heard that, you know, that you did X, Y and Z last year. And, and I was just, you know, spent some time talking to them. And, and then, you know, as I'm, as I'm hopping in my truck to, you know, to drive off, you know, the husband and wife are having this conversation about whether or not they should stay as, you know, as opposed to, you know, to return. And, and, and I, and again, it's like, I, I think our teachers did a great job of putting out a, a strong educational program, given some challenging circumstances. And I know that the educational program that we put out now, I've had several school districts call up saying, hey, you know, we'd like to use your reopening plan as sort of a template for.
Oh, I think, I think Dr. Carpenter just sort of froze. There you are. You're back.
Sorry. So I know we've got a solid, a solid plan in place there. So my, my hope is, is that we'll see some families, you know, sort of re-centering. I think what we're seeing in the real estate market is, is because of all of this, you know, of COVID, I think more and more families are realizing, yeah, we can remotely work. And, and, and that, you know, hopefully they'll see the Cape as, as a viable place to actually raise families.
Thank you. Cory, you had your hand up and then, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I'm, I'm going to make the comments relatively brief. But I mean, I, I'm a parent, you know, my wife and I, we have four kids, three schools. So we're trying to wrap our head around this whole, you know, future schools year. So I appreciate all the work the school committee has done, superintendent has done, the principals have done, the teachers have done, the parents have done, the community support in, in Montomoy is overwhelming. The Zoom video that was held by the superintendent a short time ago was maxed out. It actually, after 250 logins, you couldn't get into the meeting. So there's, there's plenty of interest, plenty of support. You know, Jeff had hit on this earlier. As a parent, I appreciate it. Scott's comment, like, he's ready to pivot if necessary. And, and as a parent, I truly appreciate that comment, that they'll be watching the numbers and, and safety first. But I do think the, the team has put a tremendous amount of work and effort into the plan, plans in place to move forward for the school year. I respect the decisions that all the parents are going to have to make. You know, whatever, there's no right or wrong decision. It's what they feel is best for their children. And I truly respect that. And I also think, you know, it's a hard times that communities come together. And in the Zoom video for the superintendent at the tail end of the meeting, you know, there was a, an individual who had moved into town recently and definitely has some emotions expressed. And she was concerned about her daughter not, you know, meeting people. And immediately there was outreach to her. Call me, text me, I'll, I'll, we'll set up some kind of, you know, socially distanced playdate. This community support in Montomoy, and that speaks volumes of the type of people we have in this community, communities. And, and I'm proud of that. So I think, I think we've positioned ourselves as best we can and we're paying attention to the numbers. And, and I appreciate all the work that's been put into this.
Thank you, Cory. Any of the comments from the board? We're all set. Peter, go ahead.
Dean was first.
Oh, Dean.
I think Peter was ahead of me, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Mine, mine is, I must was, I was concerned about, I was concerned wondering about the numbers and also about cleaning. But I, going through what Scott has given us, I think it's just, it's a very good plan. We're grandparents, so we have grandchildren in a lot of different areas. And what, what Scott said, I think, is right on. We have one that's in a very large, large school district and they're having very difficult problems trying to, to, to get back. The only other comment I'd make is that what I've read is a lot of what you did, you've done previously and it was kind of getting ahead of the curve. A lot of your teachers have, have, have taken programs, if I read that correctly, on, on distance learning, on how to use the internet, how to, how to train. So a lot of that you've already done. And I'm glad to see, I think, I agree with you, that the 10 days you have ahead of time before opening up, I think is a good, good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Dean, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for the presentation. I, I read the material as I, I know the others have as well. I thought that the plan that you put together, you, you and your team, is a very thoughtful plan. It shows evidence of considerable outreach to the whole community. It's flexible. It's adaptable. I think it's also very respectful of the individual choices of parents and guardians and others who have here for, with children. And I think the fact that 80% of the respondents want to participate, have had with students, with children participating in person learning is a significant vote of confidence, what you've put together. And I think it's really important, I'm saying what I think everybody agrees, from the president on down, it's important for kids to be back at school for not just educational reasons, but for social reasons, psychological reasons, other type of health reasons, and also for family reasons. Because so many of parents and caregivers and guardians work. So I applaud what you presented and I appreciate all the efforts. And I wish you good luck and we'll have to just keep our fingers crossed that this is going to be able to work without too much in the way of adjustments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. All right. Thank you, Scott, for that update. And we'll move on to the budget presentation.
Sure. Just to, to give a, a quick sort of overview of where we are at the budget. On, at Chatham's annual town meeting, the town voted a budget for the school district that would, that was $9,019,890. What, what we anticipate happening is that, is that we were going to have a, an ELA curriculum that we were hoping to roll out for this coming school year. Given the fact that we can't, with COVID, bring teachers in and train them to roll out an ELA curriculum effectively, we anticipate that we'll, you know, ideally move that into a, an FY22 priority for this, you know, for the school district. So that's, that's going to lower our assessment to the two towns. At the same time, we, we are anticipating at this point that we're going to get about $53,850 less in state funding. The state budget still, even at this point, isn't set, but we're anticipating a little bit less state funding. But I do think, you know, I, I do think that the, you know, the school district will, will be in a solid place. So we, you know, we have indicated what we sent to the select board and also what we had sent to Harwich, that with those budget, you know, the projected budget adjustments, we anticipate that, that the Montomoy assessment to the town of Chatham will ultimately be about $71,000 less than what the taxpayers approved at town meeting. And, and that would be, I think, the calculation's about a 2% or 2.09% less than what the town expended to support Montomoy in the previous fiscal year. year. And when we went through the budget presentations earlier, I was kind of explaining why that was changing. Because Harwich hasn't had its town meeting yet, the school district is in this 1/12 budget scenario. So we are working with the towns. The Department of Education sets what our 1/12 budget is. And, you know, that after Harwich's town meeting will shift to the budget numbers that I was sharing with you. So, you know, so there's still, you know, there are still, you know, some unknowns that will happen. But I anticipate that that decrease of $53,850 in state funding will probably be around what, you know, what the state numbers come in for Monta Moi. We're actually, you know, we're actually in a pretty good place despite all of this. There are, you know, there are cares money and just money that, you know, to support schools for getting through this that the school district does have. We actually are increasing some staffing areas as we navigate the new school year. We're increasing our nursing staff in each building. You can imagine that every child that goes to the nurse's office likely has something that presents as possibly COVID. And, you know, so nurses will have all the children that they typically deal with, plus this entire other layer added on to it. So, you know, so we have some areas that we're going to have to increase staffing. There's other areas where we have, where we've shifted staffing for the upcoming school year to allocate teachers for this distance learning model and for the in-person learning model. But, you know, as I said, I do think that, that all things considered, we're in a good place. And that's partly to, you know, to some pre-planning and just support from the taxpayers. You know, we're positioned to go one-to-one with Chromebooks if we do have to pivot and go, you know, completely remote across the board. But my hope is that we can be in-person for the whole year or as long as possible. You know, and again, getting back, you know, getting back to my two neighbors. You know, those kids need in-person learning if we're going to see, you know, see the gaps not widen. And I want to make sure that, you know, we're doing the best we can for our students. I'm quite proud of the, you know, the educational program that, you know, that we've proposed for in-person learning, you know, has, you know, probably across, you know, many of the grade levels, you know, 50% more in-person learning, you know, than a lot of school districts in the state. And again, I think that, you know, that's something that, you know, that we can manage. I think what we're going to see during this is probably average class sizes of about 10 or 12 kids in a classroom, which will allow us to be far more spread out than even six feet. And again, I think that's going to support us keeping schools open as long as we as a community make some good decisions about, you know, about keeping ourselves safe and healthy and everybody else safe and healthy. That's it from the school side.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions on the budget presentation? Fairly clear. Okay. All right. Thank you, Scott. Good luck. We'll be thinking about you and practicing good community COVID protocol. For the kids. All right.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next business agenda item is the special legislation. It's a follow-up to the annual town meeting, 2019 change of Board of Selectmen to Select Board that happened, the request was put in by Selectman Selden and Debbie Aikman. I don't know if either one of them are still on the call or not. I was just looking to see if they're on the call. I don't think so. So what I'm, so I'll just read out what. So a citizen's petition article proposing a non-binding resolution to authorize the Board of Selectmen to pursue a special act of the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to amend the town of Chatham's Home Rule Charter and the town bylaws to change all references of Board of Selectmen to Select Board was passed at the annual town meeting. And so in July, this past July, the board agreed by consensus to have town council draft special legislation to change the name of Board of Selectmen to Select Board. And so we turned to Town Council Pat Costello. And he forwarded an attached draft special act for the board's review. And pretty much the revisions were itemized by, according to our charter, by section, from section one to all the way to section 29. And basically, upon review of the act pertaining to the charter, he thought it was prudent to reference and amend the language of Chapter 457 of the Acts of 2012, which affected prior substantial, substantive amendments to the charter, in addition to the current provisions of the charter. So it looked like the revisions authorized by Chapter 457 have already been implemented and by changing Board of Selectmen to the board. So Dean, do you have any more that you can add to this as the attorney on our board?
Not Town Council, but I did look at it and I didn't check every change. I did look at Chapter 457 of the Acts of 2012, which was a formalization of a number of charter amendments. I think Mr. Costello is prudent to include a reference to that in section 28 of this draft. So as to make clear that whatever was done in 2012 is also going to be affected by this change. And so I think everything looks to me to be in order. And as Dr. Selden said earlier, how fitting it is that it's being considered tonight. And I could just make a side comment because I think it was Ms. Gibbs who asked a question, oh, at a prior meeting, what would we be calling ourselves? Or how would we be called? I guess what I've seen in the newspapers from other towns where this has already been implemented as Select Board member, I can't think of anything else. Maybe 100 years from now we'll be called Select Borders. I don't know. But I want to move to that we direct Town Council to submit the special act to the General Court for consideration. And I have one comment if that's to be seconded.
Do we have a second? Okay, second.
Great. I do just add, not as part of the motion, but perhaps Town Manager can request that Senator Seer and Representative Peak, who I guess would be filing this for us, would make every effort to try to get it enacted this year, 2020, before the legislature parochies and goes out of business for this setting. We do have a companion article that I think is on the, will be on the next, on the annual town meeting warrant, at least at this point, that would change the bylaws to conform to this. But once this legislation is adopted and acted by the legislature and signed by the governor, we would effectively be known as a Select Board. So just, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dean. And we had a second. Is there any further comment from the board? Peter, go ahead.
Just a comment. I appreciate Mr. Castro's discussion of it. Because when I went through this and I did go back and check the Acts, I wanted to understand what, how it works. And I appreciated the fact that section 28 was something that I was having a problem with. Because I thought when I read it, I didn't read it, I guess I didn't read it carefully enough. It says, if the court staff didn't think it was appropriate, we could just take it out. And I was thinking, well, we just take that out, the whole thing falls apart. But that's not the case, what I just heard. So that's fine. I thought I mentioned that. It's interesting. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments before we take a vote? Jill? See, you popped into me. Okay. Any comments? Okay. Let me, Jeff, go ahead.
Just a quick one I did. I enjoyed Florence Selden's comments earlier as well. They were very appropriate and very timely and very enlightening.
They were. I look back in my lineage to see if any of them were my relatives. And alas, none of them were. But anyway, so let's take a vote and see where we're at. Selectman Kokolas.
Aye.
Selectman DeCastro.
Aye.
Selectman Matters.
Aye.
Selectman Dinkins.
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay. This motion has passed 5:00. Okay. Where are we? Emergency water conservation measure. Oh, I just want to say, before I go further, because brevity is my thing here, I just want to thank Selectman Selden and Debbie Aikman for their due diligence in moving this forward in the last year or so. I want to thank them. Okay. So moving on to our next agenda, emergency water conservation measure. Is this you, Jill, or Dr. Dunkinson?
It's, I think it's the three of us. So myself, Tom Temple, DPW Director, Bob is on as well. And so this item was a last-minute inclusion in the warrant and to the posted agenda for the drought declaration. And unfortunately, we were trying to move pretty quickly on this and should have paused so that the board could take this under consideration. So just so there's not any confusion out there, we did do a reverse 911 call about it. And what the call had stated was that the voluntary water restrictions that the board had endorsed back in June are not mandatory. And that, however, is not the case. It does take action by the Board of Selectmen. And further, the notification that we got regarding the significant drought conditions that were declared across Massachusetts, there were some additional items in that press release, which is included in your packet, that the board could consider. So A, the consideration is, do we want to make the voluntary water restrictions mandatory? And two, do you want to go further with any of those actions? And that's found in the press release under immediate steps for communities with a level two restriction. And then the last page of the packet does note what that would look like. We drafted it based on what was in the press release, which is based on the Commonwealth's guidelines. And again, those have not been instituted. And then last, I do have Tom Temple here to talk about what it is, where we are locally with our pumpage. And he has a couple of slides. So I turn it back to the chairman of how you want to address this.
And why don't we have Director Temple do his presentation? And then we'll be better informed on what our decision should go forward. So welcome, Tom.
Welcome. Thank you. I appreciate your time. What I did, when we received the declaration on Friday from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, what I did is I reached out to all the Cape Cod communities. I did hear back from six of the communities, Brewster, Harwich, Dennis. Just to let you know where they stand, they will not be putting mandatory restrictions in place nor enforcements because of the USGS monitoring wells that they go off of. It hasn't gone, it hasn't dropped that much in this short period of time. So they're not enforcing and they're not going to be doing any mandatory. Orleans is looking to put in mandatory restrictions. They're waiting to meet with their Board of Selectmen. Right now, there's no enforcements and/or fines that they are going to be implementing. P-Town has mandatory restrictions. They've been in place since June 1st and going through October 1st. Their violations are subject to fines and termination of water services. The slides that you see before you, what I did was I gave you a history for the last five years. And you can see the amount of pumpage that we've had. And this year, 2020, that's going to from January to August 15. The second pumpage that you see from January 1st to August 15th, that represents just from January 1st to August 15th for each of the years. And you may recall in 2016, when I came on board, they, we had that hot spell where we ended up with not a lot of snowfall and we had a drought condition early in the springtime. That was, that's been our highest pumpage thus far, followed by 2018. We had 173,92,500. And currently, we're at 175, 175,983,800. What our problem is with respect to the other communities that I mentioned a few minutes ago, Chatham has very shallow wells. And right now, out of the eight wells that are currently active, five of them are 75 feet and less. So what that does is it, the water that you're drawing down gets you closer to the screen levels, which typically brings you in areas where if you're pumping like we are currently, as you may recall, in 2016, we were pumping between 21 and 22 hours a day. The industry, you know, the industry level was normally 16. So it taxes your water distribution system, your pumps, et cetera. We're now with the heat that we've had over the last several months. We're 9% higher this year than last year at the same time. However, we're pumping right around 18 and 19 hours per day. You know, I've mentioned the last several years about our capital and I keep mentioning the fact that Wells 10 and 11, which was started in 2009, if we had Wells 10 and 11 on board, that gives you roughly, it's providing another 750 gallons, million gallons per day. What that does, it gives you the ability to take and rest some of your other wells and pull them offline so they're not being pumped for 18 and 19 hours. So when you see that kind of pumpage happening for all your, all your eight wells that we currently have, we have nine, but we haven't touched well four, as you may recall, it was contaminated years ago and that's been offline since then. So with that in mind, you know, we're trying to go ahead and give the maximum amount of water that we can, the quality water, keeping it going. When we're pumping like we have for the last several weeks, we had an incident with well three where we ended up having an issue. And it ended up shorted out and it caused delays. So we were down without well three for a short period of time. We were able to keep pumping and pull some of the other ones further and put them up into a position where we have the necessary water we need for fire suppression and also our distribution system. So with that said, you know, we're in a position right now where Brewster, Harwich, Orleans, they're not putting restrictions in. I feel we're in a better shape than we were in 2016 as far as the heat wave and the pumpage that we're doing. However, on the other side of it, when I was speaking with Dr. Dunkinson earlier today, we, as he mentioned earlier, that our beaches and some of our lakes are down.
We lost Tom for a second. While we wait for Tom to either come back online or call in, maybe we can just talk amongst ourselves about the additional steps that were proposed by the state, if there's anything that the board looks at that might be something to consider. Go ahead. Go ahead, Dean. I get rattled when things freeze. Dean, Corey, then Jeff. Go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. The discussion in the memo for the summer last tape, revised standards, which would be mandatory, they're different from the standards we have in place now. They're more restrictive in addition to being mandatory. And my question initially is, the current, the current voluntary measures are applicable only to those systems that are on the public water supply. That's my understanding. What we put in place and we've done it the past year. So if you're on a private well, you're not obligated to follow them, even though they're all voluntary. I suppose obligation is part of ours here. But is the intention here that it would reach, if we were to adopt mandatory standards, whether they're the ones that are in place now or these more restrictive ones? whether they're the ones that are in place now or these more restrictive ones? Um, and I'll read them for the benefit of the public. Outdoor watering is limited to handheld hoses, watering cans only between 5:00 PM and 9:00 AM. No watering during or within 48 hours after measurable rainfall. Not sure what the definition of measurable rainfall is. Three, no watering of hard surfaces, sidewalks, patios, driveways, siding, et cetera. No washing of personal vehicles or boats. No operation of non-recirculating fountains, building of swimming pools, hot tubs and back, or backyard informal rinks. Four, installation of new saw, lawn seating and/or landscaping should be deferred. Again, that's kind of a vague standard and I know, I realize that these are taken from state guidelines as opposed to state rules. So is the intent here in terms of the suggestion we're being offered to make these applicable as well to, uh, private wells, systems on private wells? And is that really, is that enforceable? I'm asking the question. So I don't know who can answer that.
Tom or Jill, do you have an answer for that question?
Well, I, I think the, the way that the regulations were read, uh, that were approved a couple of years ago, um, the DPW would be the enforcing, um, body as well as the police department. Um, you know, this is, this is a big undertaking. If we follow the current standards that were implemented, um, this is a lot of certified receipt, uh, requested letters going out, seven day period waiting and then sending out another, um, notification to them. And then finally, uh, the fines that are associated with, that were approved. Um, if you're going with the state's, yeah, new requirements that they put in that letter, um, again, it would be something that, uh, the board would have to decide, do you want to change what we've previously approved and go with those and, and set new limits or new restrictions for penalties associated with what they, what they have in place here? So.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff here, uh, Dean, I think you're muted. You wanna? There you go.
Are you intend, are you intending to reach private wells? Systems that are on private wells? Is that the suggestion we're making here or are we still gonna? Regardless of whether we make it mandatory or not, regardless of whether we adopt more stringent restrictions or not?
I, I believe our, our intent was just to go on those that are connected to our distribution system because that's what's taxing our, our, you know, pumps, our, you know, our water lines, et cetera. Uh, so I don't, I don't believe that was the intent.
Yeah. Okay. Just one final comment, uh, on the, uh, the items that I read. And I didn't, I did point to two items as I read them, measure, the term measurable rainfall, uh, and the phrase, uh, the clause should be deferred. I think if, if these were put into effect as mandatory restrictions, subject to enforcement, I think it'd be some legal issues in terms of how you can enforce something where there's somewhat ambiguous and would have to be defined more, more precisely so people are on sufficient notice. I'm not sure where we go with this. Uh, I know it was, it was nice to have a little rain the last couple of nights, not enough fortunately. Uh, but, um, uh, if, uh, the surrounding towns or some, some of our neighbors are not, um, going, uh, with, uh, mandatory, um, that gives me some comfort and, and along the lines to, in addition to, uh, um, just finding something, I think we should close, um, and maybe revisit this on, on a periodic, if not a regular basis as we go into, uh, you know, Labor Day and beyond. Uh, we, the, the real complication is, uh, we saw it in your, in your graph. Um, we've got a lot of people in town. Uh, and if, if this August is to be compared with prior August, people are not leaving. We would be seeing the population dwindle in the middle of August. We're not seeing that. So.
And I, and I believe that this is, I believe this is something that's going to last long beyond with all the, to being deferred and, and starting later and the people are going to stay longer. I think we're going to see that our pumpage is going to stay up for at least October at, at, at a higher standard. So it's, it's something that we really got to monitor and, and watch. Um, my recommendation is on the flip side of those A-frame signs that you have, that you see throughout the community, there's like 12 or 13 of them. Um, on the flip side of that, instead of having voluntary, we have mandatory on those. I might suggest that we, we turn those around and just show that as mandatory, those that that are going to read that would probably follow that a little bit more strict and at least that lowers your level. Um, you're not finding anybody and we're keeping an eye, an eye on what's being pumped and how long it's happening and we can revisit it. But I, it, at least it's showing that it's, it's something we're trying to have people watch and pay attention to.
I'm not sure you can do that legally, but I wonder if you could block out the word, um, mandatory and just put conservation restrictions, turn the, flip the side around. But anyway, I, I don't know that you can do it the way you're suggesting legally.
Um, I, 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 I would have to say that with the mandatory side of it, and it is, I'm getting an echo back here. I don't, I don't know what that is. Uh, if there's somebody that's got a telephone and computer on at the same time, please mute it. Thank you. Um, you know, self-compliance is important and conservation is, you know, I, I agree with Tom that people are gonna, that are really conscientious about it are gonna take it to heart and do the right thing. Um, and then we, if we keep an eye on it, then we've got an eye on it and we know that we, moving forward, we can do some more education around, um, water conservation, uh, and get it out there that this is taxing on, on an infrastructure, uh, to some degree. Um, there are going to be people that aren't going to comply obviously, but, um, just my thoughts. Um, Dean, go ahead.
Just a further thought on the point, maybe we should just ask town council if he, if he thinks Tom's suggestion is doable. If you'd like to refer to him.
Peter, you're muted. Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, no, this is a very, this is a fairly sensitive decision that we're making. I feel, you know, we're, number one, it's a little rushed. I, I, if I thought that a mandatory restriction was a legal move, I would entertain it. At this point in our summer, even though I'm concerned about our, our pumping, I'm, I'm not ready to recommend any of these immediate steps that are in this, this, uh, this memo. I just, the, the, it's fraught with enforcement complexities and you have to communicate and educate, et cetera. So, uh, number one, I'm, I'm interested in, and I, hearing Tom's recommendation, I did, and I would tend to agree with it if it's legal because I think a mandatory restriction does convey the seriousness of purpose of the restriction. Number one. Number two, I'm very interested in the short and medium term steps for the communities that are included in this memo, which includes a year-round water conservation program that includes public education and communication. I think that's very important and I think perhaps we haven't done enough of that. The signs are great, but do we really, really get out there and communicate our concern? Provide timely information to local residents and businesses. Businesses are huge here. Some of the pumpage, uh, from some of the businesses here is gigantic. Check emergency interconnections on water supply, which I think we do and the water department does a good job there. But develop a local drought management plan using guidance outlined in the state drought management plan. For us to say, to, you know, to announce tonight that we have a mandatory ban, blah, blah, blah. Um, first of all, I don't know if it's legal. Second of all, I would favor it if I thought it would give greater weight to compliance. And that's, that's what I think. I also am concerned that if Chatham does it alone and we don't have Brewster, Howard, Dennis and the surrounding towns doing it, are we not all one big giant aquifer that we share? I, I don't know. I'm told our wells are shallow and then maybe we don't, but I think we do. I think we share one aquifer. So we're constru, we're, we're restricting consumption in our town, but perhaps other towns aren't. So where are we in that dynamic? So, so I have some concern. I think we really should implement short and medium term steps, uh, that is recommended in this memo. And I would like to know whether or not our declaration of a mandatory ban is legal. If it is, I would tend to support it. Um, very, very dry the last two or three months here in, on the Cape and in Chatham, very dry. And yes, we got, we got rain the last couple of nights, but that may not do it for the rest of the season. We could get another big hot spell. So water is one of our most precious resources and, uh, we have to do our best to conserve it. And I would like to know more about the condition of our wells, Tom. We kind of give sometimes the capital budget a little bit short shrift and, you know, you look at the, uh, well maintenance, you go, yeah, yeah. But it's hugely important to us. So, I mean, I think you can raise up the flagpole, come capital budget time, you might get a warmer ear here. Certainly you will with me. Thank you.
It was very, very enlightening when I took a look at the, at the wells today and looking at the ages of the, of the pumps and, and the, uh, the, how old some of them are. They range from six, six years to 31 years for so, some of those pumps. It's very, very enlightening when you, when you pull everything out and you're, you're looking when something like this happens. So, um, and, you know, even the, the years that these pumps were put in. So it's, I can provide an update further.
So I would like to ask our, I'd have, uh, direct Jill to please ask town council whether or not a mandatory ban is, is legal or not. And are we, do we have the powers, Water and Sewer Commissioners to, to so declare?
Uh, go ahead, Dean. And then Cory.
Jeff, do I, I can just require a vacation, Cory. Jeff, are, are you, aren't you just saying what you want to ask town council is can we flip the signs around and put up?
Correct.
We're not asking.
Yeah. We, we don't need a gigantic, you know, legal, yes, that's exactly what I'm asking. Thank you, Dean.
And, and I would just add to what you say, the request that if, if town council says it's okay, let's just go ahead and do it. Don't bring it, but don't bring it back to the board of selectmen.
Thanks so much. Yep.
Great.
So moved.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll vote on that, but we're going to let Cory and Peter speak first and then we'll, we'll, we'll cast that vote as a continued vote.
I just made a motion, that's all.
Oh, you made a motion? Okay. Do we have a second on? Okay. Second on that, further discussion. Cory.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I, I have no problem with trying to come up with like stronger language to encourage people to, to, to be more conservative, uh, with their water usage and, and whatever. I have no problem with that. Um, if we were to move forward with any type of status change, um, or amendments and adding any language, I, I do want to ask that we are clear of the enforcement component. You know, what is realistic? Uh, what resources do we have? Uh, to what extent are we going to be, uh, tax, taxing our, our, our staff with, um, you know, enforcing, you know, issues? Um, I, I just want to be clear because I have no problem with trying to, you know, be, um, uh, due diligent with our, with our water conservation, but, um, without a clear understanding of how the enforcement component plays out, uh, I think we, we would leave ourselves a little short sighted. So I just want to have a, a clear picture of, of everything, um, as we move forward on this too. So, um, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Cory. Peter, did you have a comment or are we gonna take a?
Uh, he, most of what I wanted to say has already been said in one way or another and, and I agree with where, the direction we're moving. Just want to make one point about this whole thing, if I understood Tom correctly. Um, our, our wells are, are, are not as deep as others. We are pumping, uh, with some of our equipment that's extremely old, 30 years. I would assume that's old. I, 30 year pump, you know, I, I don't know what kind of maintenance you do, but I imagine we maintain them. Uh, so, uh, we have a little different problem than towns around us, but if I understood what he said. And we could have a problem with some of our older pumps if this continues. So I think we're going in the right direction, but, um, uh, enforcement is going to be important, but, but, um, what, what's just as important is to make sure that we don't lose any of our pumps or that, uh, we can't, we're going to start pumping, uh, considerably amount more than we did previously. Uh, and, and I agree, uh, we could have a, who knows? I mean, we could might be able to, weather might be, be, be better, but I've, I've noticed, I've looked at the forecasts, uh, over the last, uh, month or so, and it looks like September may be just as bad, but I could be surprised with a, with a hurricane. Who knows? But anyway, I, I, I agree with which, the direction we're moving.
Okay. Any further comments from, uh, the board before we take a vote? And my understanding is that we're gonna, um, the motion is that we will be looking to town council to see if flipping the, the signs to mandatory is illegal, um, uh, legal, is legal and possible. And if that, if that is in case the fact, then the staff is directed to just go ahead and do it. And, and that's what we're voting on tonight. All right?
Yes.
Okay. So let's take a vote. Um, Peter?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. All right. Thank you. Um, Tom, I just want to make a note that, uh, we'd be interested to get an update on the town pump systems, infrastructure, um, as a matter of, before we go to budget, um, discussions and whatnot.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time tonight. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right. Our next, uh, item is, and our, um, before our last item of public comments, our item is town manager's report, uh, from the town manager. Jill, hi.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, uh, I was in front of the town offices at 549 and I caught this nice gentleman putting his ballot into our new, uh, ballot box. So there's some additional signage on there so people know that it is, uh, there, it is secure, it's bolted to the concrete, so it's not going to go anywhere. So, but that was kind of fun. Um, and then, um, in your packet, just disregard the mandatory water conservation measures. Again, as I reported, I think we jumped a little too quickly. Um, I think it's probably because we've been in COVID mode and hearing, um, you know, things come down from the governor's office and, and taking action. So, um, so we can, we can disregard that, but, um, I don't want to disregard the employee years of service. And as you see, this is for September and, um, Sergeant Bill Glover has been with the town for 39 years. And in, in this particular, uh, anniversary date addition, you know, Chief David DiBisquale, 31 years from his time where he was a call firefighter. Uh, we have Kevin Moore, also firefighter, and Justin Tavano for 15 years, who's our new deputy chief. And then Lou Malzone, our police sergeant, that I'm not sure a lot of us get to see that often, depending on what he works. Uh, but I, I think the longevity is really important to note. And I know that the police department does do, um, their own longevity recognition service every year. And so they did do that under COVID conditions, social distancing outside. And some other good news relates to our project at 90 Bridge Street. Uh, we were able to secure a grant from the Seaport Council for $295,000. There will be a formal announcement coming up. I think Bob's, not Bob, uh, Ted is doing a presentation tomorrow, uh, virtually to them. And we always get a preview. So this is pretty exciting, $295,000 to offset the town's costs for that. And, uh, speaking of grants, the Fire Rescue Department's been very successful and they received another grant and this one's for $48,000 for, from FEMA's grant programs, uh, for assistance to firefighters for a training mannequin. And I'm sure we'll get pictures of that up on our website as soon as we get it. And then we've had just pending items for a town-owned dredging study. And just put a note here that, um, the consultants have been delayed in putting together some of the information, but they're working to put a draft report, uh, by the end of this month and early September with a presentation to the board of selectmen. And then we were just pulling some data and I, I wanted to add this in here. Uh, there's some questions I get every so often, do we have more full-time residents in town? And it, because town is so busy, it sort of feels like that. So I provided data for voter registration, uh, just through July 31st. And, um, we are up, we're at, uh, 5,838 registered voters. And as the town clerk notes, and I noted in here, presidential elections usually get people, more people to register for the vote, uh, to vote. But this will be interesting and we'll see what August, uh, comes out at. And then, um, the assessor's office, as they're doing their annual revaluation, uh, we're now, uh, down to 57% of our homeowners, our second homeowners. And we've been carrying that number, uh, 60% and a few years ago, we were up at 62%. So this is definitely trending towards full-time residents. And then follow up to the board of selectmen's, uh, meeting that we had in August is that we're moving forward with the RFP for the Housing and Community Engagement Consultant as well as the emergency, COVID emergency rental assistance program. And we're fine tuning the request for private property, uh, acquisition for affordable housing, big A and small A. So, uh, this is a monthly report for July. These were the current items and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Thank you, Jill. As always, it's a really interesting report and it really reads about what's going on in the town. Uh, Peter, your hand was up, then Jeff, then, then Dean.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a comment, um, it's, it's, uh, the, the report again is, is excellent. I always, I like to go through it, but I can't read the whole thing at the one, at one time, but you can, it's loaded with all kinds of information. One thing I, I will comment on, um, that I've noticed over the last month or so, uh, the town clerk and what, what the town clerk and that office has done as far as getting out, uh, the, the, getting out the vote, putting a, a drop box in there. I walked into the, to pick up my package one day and, uh, town clerk's out there outside with a whole bunch of Pete kids, all social distance, just raised their hand and say, uh, you know, uh, wel, welcome to, to, to Chatham and you're going to work in the, in the beach in a number of areas. Uh, and I, I think they've done a great job. I, and, and I'm probably for one, sometimes take them for granted, but they, I just wanted to give them a, an. but I just wanted to give them an attaboy. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, I don't know who I said was next, but.
Dean.
Dean.
Dean, Jeff.
Jeff, go ahead. Jeff, you were next.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. No, it's a great report. I always enjoy reading it. Just going to comment that I thought the data on the residents registering to vote was fascinating. We're up 300 and some odd over last month, and 500 and something. I haven't done the math quite, but it's from a year over year, so I thought that was fascinating. Building permits are kind of flat and going down too, so I thought that was interesting as well. Anyway, it is a great report. Thank you.
Okay, Dean, then. Dean?
Thank you. I was just going to comment also on the data about voting and the assessing data. I think a jump of 500 voters over last year, even though it is a presidential election year, is really interesting. We were just talking about water and people staying longer. I think all our infrastructure is going to be taxed, all of our services are going to be taxed more than entire years. So it's important. I think I would encourage you, Jill, to continue to report this data in your reports. The only other comment I just wanted to note for the record, because I did ask this question when I met Sergeant Malzone a few years ago, that he is a nephew or great nephew of the late, great third baseman for the Boston Red Sox, Frank Malzone.
Frank!
My grandfather's favorite player, so I would point that out.
He was good. He was my favorite player when I was a kid.
Any comments, Cory? Did you have any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Okay, no, I mean, this could be said probably just about every month of the year, but you know, you look at the report too, I just want to give a shout out to our first responders, the police, the fire, our harbor master. I mean, you could look at some of the calls they've had and some of the rescues and assistance and whatever they've performed. It's amazing, and we're fortunate to have the crew and the staff that we've put together. And I just want to recognize their efforts, because it's truly amazing, some of the stuff that, you know, they've had to perform, you know, and they continue to perform.
It has been, has been quite a summer for everybody. Peter?
Yeah, mine will be quick. Just, we talked about the census. One of the important things that come out of the census are infrastructure grants. And if our infrastructure is growing and we're going to need it more, guess what we need? Our grants. So make sure you fill out that census.
Right, right on, right on. All right, okay. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final order of business tonight is public comments again. And so I'll take a roll of any remote participants that would like to make a comment at this time.
Elaine Gibbs?
Elaine, anybody else?
Steve Buckley.
Steve Buckley, all right. Go ahead, Elaine Gibbs, go ahead.
Yes, Elaine Gibbs, it's 8:20, and so it's almost two and a half hours. So I would like to go on record saying I don't believe that the public comment has caused long meetings. Steve Buckley and I are perhaps the only few people who have been on over the last few months, and this is going to be a little cumbersome for me to comment on all of what's transpired. In terms of the state switching from daily numbers to weekly numbers for COVID, I would ask that the town push back on that and ask why. We are in the most critical period where we need to know on a daily basis what's going on in Martinsville County and in Chatham. And for some reason, they decided we don't need to know that anymore. I don't know why they made that decision. I think we should push back and ask why. In terms of the community center opening up for programs, I would hope that the priority is to support parents. I don't think we need exercise classes for senior citizens or any of those other programs. We need to provide programming for children so that parents can get back to work. I think that Superintendent Carpenter referenced it only kind of laterally that there is an increased enrollment of children, maybe from summer residents, that are now thinking of being here. While he thought that was a good thing, I think that we need to look at that, and I would defer to Dean, who also mentioned that, that there is a trend going on here, that we may see a market increase in residents who are sending their children to our schools because they don't want to go back to their home states. So they're changing residence, voter registration is going up, that's an indicator. They're changing their primary residence to here. And while we may think it's a good thing, we need to know what that's going to do to our infrastructure. I think it has impacted the water. I've got a problem with this conservation thing here. Tom Temple said 750 million gallons a day. I think that was a misstatement. The average person uses 100 gallons a day. That would mean we have 7.5 million people in Chatham. So I think he has to look at that number again. I don't think those are what the numbers are. But I do think we're going to see an increase, and I don't think the increase is going to be because of we're watering our lawns or washing our cars. You know, we're going to be the people who pay that price, but it's because we have 20 people in a rental property. That's what we're seeing. I've seen it in my neighborhood. There are eight cars in driveways here with 15, 20 people, and they're all out of state. That's what's driving the water consumption up. So to put in irrigation, moratorium is not going to solve the problem. We've got to dig down deeper and find out what's going on here. And I would also hope that we are looking towards grants. My understanding is, because of COVID, there's a ton of money available to communities. And that should be for the cleaning of the schools. That should not fall to the taxpayers. I think, you know, obviously, we're going to see an increase in that. But I would hope that we are applying for every single grant possible to get us through. And I have to say, I was pleased with Scott Carpenter's plan to get the kids back to school, particularly through K through 8, when parents need to have coverage for their children so they can go back to work. But we have to offer after-school programs, and we have to make sure we're covering that so that these kids can get an education. And I hope you rethink this whole process of not allowing people to speak till the end. It's too late. You know, I've been sitting here for two and a half hours, as you guys have, and I appreciate that. But there are some things that parents can't sit for two hours so that they can weigh in for two minutes about, you know, something affecting the school. They just can't do it. And it's really unfair, you know? This is like a private meeting you guys are holding, and it's for those people who are willing to sign in early on and stick it out for two and a half hours to find out what you're going to say and then make a comment. So, you know, if you really want input from the public, do it the way you did it before, you know, and then they can go back and they can put their kids to bed, you know, and they can get back to their lives. They shouldn't have to stick around. And that's why no parents were online tonight, because they simply can't do it, you know? And it affects their lives more than mine, you know? I'm just a grandparent. My kids and grandkids don't live here, but I have empathy for them, and they need to, they need to have their backs watched. And they can't, they can't do it. And so, you know, Cory, you know, you've got four kids, and you know what it's like. And I hope you can convince the rest of them that this is not the way to go. You know, parents need to be able to weigh in and have the board listen to them so that they don't have to sit here for two and a half hours, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Stephen Buckley.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for clearing my throat while I was not muted. It's one of those things where we're learning how to use the technology to not interrupt each other in those ways. And I know you've been, I commend the Board of Selectmen for using the technology in this time of pandemic to maintain business and communication and so forth. So I know you're doing the best you can, and I guess I want to make sure that we are using this opportunity, the technology, to improve the quality of communication. And Elaine Gibbs mentioned, was talking about that, and I know you have a new policy about, you're experimenting now with, well, let's try it, maybe this will work. Let's try another way where we wait until the end, and people can wind up. And it could be something about that. But what I wanted to point out was that earlier in the meeting, way earlier in the meeting, I was saying that it would be nice if there was training for committee members so that when their committee did meet again, they'd be ready, and it wouldn't be, you know, people like myself not muting ourselves or learning how to mute everybody except the speaker. I don't know how to do that. I don't know if Microsoft Teams can do that. So that's my thought, is that let's get up to speed here, because as the town manager was saying, and I think we all know from anecdotal things, is that there's a lot more people who are going to be living in Chatham and working remotely. And so the idea being that this will be, we're going to have to get very good, or we don't have to, we should get very good at learning how to use the technology, how to conduct meetings and so forth. So that's the point I wanted to make, was that the training is very important. And if you want to get people on committees, tell them to get free Microsoft training.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Tom, I just wanted you to give the opportunity to comment on the gallonage that you reported on.
Yeah, Elaine was correct. What I was doing is I was comparing well four or well five, if we had the ability to rotate with well 10 and 11. What I meant to say was, I said 420 to 450 gallons per minute, and wells 10 and 11 would produce 700 gallons per minute, not 700 and whatever apparently I said. So I do apologize, but that was what I was trying to say, 700 gallons per minute, which means I'd have the ability to pull off well five and another well, which is more than that 450 for well five. So I do apologize.
No worries. Thank you very much. If you need to follow up with an email with that, that's great, too. All right, that concludes our meeting tonight, unless there's anybody else that has a public comment they'd like to speak to. Okay, hearing none. Motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Second on that?
Second.
Okay, I'll take a roll call of the Board. Selectman Kokolas?
Aye.
Selectman Metters?
Aye.
Selectman Dykens?
Aye.
Selectman Nacastro?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Jill. Thank you for the staff that was on. I think the meeting went really well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.